Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Hudsonville Public Schools Board of Education Regular Meeting for December 14th to work. All right, first up, we have approval of our agenda. Motion to approve the agenda?
I move that.
Move it by Mark?
Support.
Support by Andrew, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Agenda is approved. First up, we have Rock and Shield Visitors and Hearing of People present. Robin. Just a little challenge tonight with technology. All right, the first speaker is Rich Hauptman. Andrew Robinson.
So, to be honest, I just wanted to speak at the last work session. I filled out the wrong form. So, I have absolutely nothing that I had planned to say, except I hope that everyone has a fantastic Christmas and holiday season, and spends a lot of time with family and friends, and is recharged for 2024 ahead. And I'll also just say how thankful I am for our teachers. My family's been five for five, fantastic teachers in this district. My seven-year-old has been struggling with reading. Her confidence just really, really low to start the year. And her teacher, Mrs. Cooley, has just been such an encouragement to her. Her confidence is so high, it's such a joy to come home and see your child reading a book on the couch. So, and reading a book in bed. So, they're a very great district here, and a lot to be thankful for. Have a great holiday season.
Becca Skipper.
For the last year and a half, I have been attending or watching board meetings, and have had the privilege of presenting to the board on a book review committee. One thing has come across crystal clear. This board has not actively supported the staff that it serves. You have given significant airtime with no redress to those who speak ill of your teachers and administrators. After reading the email sent to you on November 1st by a previous board commenter, one complete with 20 examples of teacher activism in the classroom, I wonder if you are aware of the inaccuracies of her messaging. Many of those are from four or more years ago, pulled from private social media archives, and several were pictures from things now even from Hudsonville schools. Allowing the uninformed to continue their rants and allowing the vitriol to continue during public comments sends a clear message to your teachers. You don't support them. Failing to address these hateful commenters shows you believe the fallacies they relay. It is time for you to unequivocally state through word and deed that you support our parochies teachers, bus drivers, custodians, administrators, and superintendent. When asking for committee work of educational professionals, take their advice. Don't allow staff to be heckled in public. When you vote or agree on something in a closed session, stand by your private actions in public. When people get up and spread lies about your staff and you have not seen it to be true, speak the truth. When something seems off to you, go to the school and talk with the principal, superintendent. Trust what they say, and step back and let them do their jobs. Don't present one opinion in a group of three or four and then present something else in public. Adhere to the code of conduct. Take the staff survey that has 272 comments about you seriously. Thinking that your staff's feedback about your actions doesn't apply to you is ignorant and sends a message yet again to the staff that you don't support them. You have an opportunity tonight to send a message to all staff that you value them. It might seem strange for me to be talking about Dr. Vander Jack's evaluation, but the reality is, the way you conducted his evaluation says a great deal about the way you would treat any staff member. So, when discussing his evaluation, share his high score you all agreed on in closed session a couple of weeks ago and vote unanimously to approve it. On November 27th, when Jay Bennett of MASB led you through the off-cycle evaluation, he asked you to chime in if you had any problems with any of the scores given during closed session, and not one of you interjected. You had no problem with the 97% score then, you shouldn't have a problem tonight. Your words and deeds need to be consistent, whether in closed session or in public. This will send a message to your staff that you are committed to being fair, honest, and transparent, something you all vow to the UTEA and our team. Your comments about healing and coming together are only as good as how you handle things tonight. Then tomorrow, write a note of thanks to a bus driver, parochial, teacher, custodian, food service employee, or administrator. When a random community member approaches you with an endless regurgitation of hate, have faith in your staff. Should you seize these opportunities, you will be moving in the direction of healing and send a message to all staff that you support them. Thank you.
Jennifer Wong.
Hi there. I'd like to use my time today to discuss conflict resolution strategies with the board. It is quite obvious to all of those that attend these meetings that there is quite a communication breakdown and feelings of tension between our board members, as well as between our board members and our district administration. Also, yesterday was Taylor Swift's birthday, and I can pass out the opportunity to talk about what it means to be an anti-hero. Everyone on this board fills a supervisory position within our district, so let me explain how being an anti-hero pertains to us. First of all, an anti-hero is someone that engages in their, in conflict again, or with their own will. Rather than serving the greater good, an anti-hero is someone that would put themselves first. The following lists are tendencies that an anti-heroic supervisor might naturally have when they face a conflict. Please listen to the list, take a moment to reflect on if you have been in this situation with an anti-heroic supervisor. Advice giving. When supervisors provide advice or proceed, or proceed if expertise, it is helpful to have empathy. However, when used improperly, it also undermines and overlooks a person's need for emotional support. Explaining, correcting, or justifying. When an incident is brought to a supervisor's attention, jumping directly into a response feels patronizing and insincere. Asking immediate questions can lead to defensiveness, missing the root of the issue and escalating a conflict. One-upping. When a supervisor tells another colleague, "In my day, we did so-and-so," or, "Well, when I worked here," that undermines the staff member's experience. It also feels overpowering, unrelated to the issue, and limits trust. Shaming, judging, or criticizing. If a supervisor is addressing a conflict with a colleague and interrupts the colleague saying, "This is no, there is no excuse. This is unacceptable. This causes long-term damage to the relationship and is a personal attack." This also undermines trust and creates defensiveness. Have any of you experienced these tendencies in your workplace? What about while serving on Board of Education? While you think about that, I want to finish with this. When board members act as anti-heroes and take conflicts personally, we as a district suffer. Consciously or unconsciously, individuals on this board are responsible for their reactions and how they work in a collaborative effort. Our district administrators are doing the best that they can, and it is important to approach every situation with them with compassion and empathy. Please take time to think about your actions and words, and if they are bettering this collaboration or working for your own benefit.
Jill Bosnack.
Good evening. I spent my time in November thanking the different groups of people who help keep Hudsonville School District functioning. Everyone has a very important role, and I think everyone can do it in our heart. This month, as a holiday's earth on us, I'm going to be greedy and ask the board to grant us some wishes. My main wish is that the board becomes a truly cohesive board. Looking at today's agenda, there's two things that are extremely important to me that will be discussed: the SORFIVE goals and the superintendent evaluation. The SORFIVE strategic planning is extremely imperative to the district as it sets priorities for the next two years. This was presented to the board this summer, and it's a little disappointing that the board numbers are still going back and forth after the reading. I hope you understand your role as the board is to unify the district around these important initiatives. It's not to take time in these meetings to wordsmith or go back and forth on the tiny details. Let's focus on the big picture and what the district is trying to accomplish. It's almost as if the attendees of the meetings, people like me, are kids. And the board, you guys, are the parents. And you're upfront arguing over tiny things. We're criticizing each other during these meetings. We don't like to see our parents bickering in front of us, and my wish is that this stops. The SORFIVE survey stated that teachers do not feel respected by some of the board members. The board has become too political and is not putting all students and educators first. Only 26% of the staff and 24% of the teachers responded in being completely or very satisfied. Looking at the bright side, that's 74 or 76% who've been for improvement. One of the frequently mentioned suggestions for improvement included, quote, "Renew trust between the board and the staff with a board that supports all students and doesn't have personal political agendas." My wish is that this board follows this suggestion. The second agenda item that is important to me is Dr. Vander Jack's evaluation. Thank you for your leadership. The students in this district are happy, the teachers are happy, and we want the board, just like our parents, to be happy and get along. In fact, 75% of the total staff and the teachers completely are very happy with your leadership, Dr. Vander Jack. Please continue to push this Hudsonville district into the future, and I trust my appreciation for you, just as many staff did in the SORFIVE survey. I support you, and my wish is that this board also supports Dr. Vander Jack. My Christmas wish, not only for myself, but for the entire district, is that the board goes into 2024 as a new year with a new mindset. You have a very important role to accelerate the growth and healing of this district. Let's be honest, we all know it's been a rough couple of years. Collaborate together, support each other, and become a truly unified board. This will trickle down to all aspects within the district and make us the even greater Hudsonville Public Schools I know we can be. I wish you unity, collaboration, non-political agendas, and to put the students and their education first at the holidays.
Jennifer Johnson.
Good evening. Dr. Vander Jack? Thank you. Thank you for your hard work and dedication to our students, teachers, staff, and community. You have faced so much in the last three years as our superintendent, and our district is incredibly lucky to have you for it. Many of the people in this room have heard me supporting Dr. Vander Jack over the past few years, and this is due to my family's experience within this district. Having a child graduate in 2020, and this district being one of two schools in the state to have an actual in-person graduation, yeah, it may have looked a lot different than what usual may have taken place the first week in August. But those students will never forget how hard this district worked to provide them with an opportunity to get their diplomas in person and together as a class. Dealing with COVID, masks, keeping students in school while other districts went through frequent and lengthy closures, navigating through parents' mistrust from not being able to be in schools with their children, a unique school board election, and the erosion of staff and community support for the board are only a few examples of the difficulties you have faced. Managing these challenges while still moving this district forward through unprecedented growth in the ensuring construction projects, all while doing an exceptional job with the everyday responsibilities this job entails is why I wholeheartedly support you and congratulate you on your success. After all, your success benefits this district, its students, staff, and community as a whole. So, thank you about Dr. Vander Jack, you are appreciated. This meeting is the last of the year, and January brings a new opportunity for this board. I ask you to put your focus back on the important job of supporting this district in a positive manner and putting an end to the negativity surrounding certain members to begin rebuilding the trust in our teachers, staff, and community that they have lost in this board. I believe that starts with removing Mark Rutherford and Greg Chansky as members of the executive team. Greg has now been a board member for a year and is as clueless about his position as the day he started. His lack of understanding and his unwillingness to learn have proven him unworthy and flat-out ignorant for the position as treasurer. Mark's tenure as president has been disastrous at best. Her disgusting public comments regarding who she believes should be parents, lack of procedural understanding, underhand meetings with Mark and Greg while excluding other board members and out of public view, and most importantly, the erosion of trust between teachers, staff, and community members, which was clearly demonstrated in the source survey reports and their comments. It's time to right this ship, and it starts with appointing members who understand the positions who are focused on moving their district forward in a positive and trustworthy manner. Thank you.
Emily Breptin.
Good evening. The board, I'm here tonight to speak in support of our superintendent. It's only been one year since Dr. Vander Jack's previous evaluation, and I remember clearly sitting in the audience as his evaluation was summarized. Total score of 3.994 across myriad domains of leadership. I breathed a sigh of relief that his incredible work and dedication to the district was reflected in his evaluation. And yet, that relief was briefly overshadowed by some post hoc commentary, which sounded mostly like grandstanding to me. And yet, here we are again. Annual performance reviews are not the protocol for a seasoned superintendent in this district. Why then has the board broken from the established evaluatory framework and devoted this time and effort to a premature evaluation? Given his excellent evaluation just 12 months ago, I am left to wonder. It strikes me that this board may misunderstand sentiments of this district as a whole because of the loud, vitriolic, and often inaccurate statements of a minority. So, tonight, let me clearly and calmly counter that narrative. He's doing an amazing job. What a tiring, fangless, and demanding endeavor. No, he's not perfect, and neither are you or I. As a district, we've navigated tremendous growth, the far-reaching impact of a global pandemic, and numerous other challenges with him at the helm. Please recognize the important work he's done and let him do his job. He's poured himself into this district, and we are fortunate to have him. The recent SORFIVE staff survey corroborates this. 75% of staff and teachers with an N of over 600 respondents reported that they are very satisfied or completely satisfied with his leadership. In contrast, only 6% of staff and teachers indicated that they were slightly or not at all satisfied. To put these numbers in perspective, only 26% of the same HPS staff felt very or completely satisfied with the leadership of this very board, compared to his 75, while 37% were slightly or not at all satisfied in your leadership. At the last board meeting, Mr. Chansky indicated that he had problems with his trust level. Well, Mr. Chansky, I agree that there is an issue of trust, but I'd like to respectfully suggest that you have the directionality wrong. I'd like to use my remaining time to briefly comment on SORFIVE. I'm proud to be part of a district that engages in thoughtful, long-term, and strategic planning. I'd like to encourage the board to focus on efforts on ensuring that all students benefit from the district's resources, but particularly those students who are marginalized or who have been overlooked in the past. I ask you to support these goals and provide these resources to set aside your personal agendas and work for the health and development of this district. Enable HPS to nurture every student from every family, whether or not they look like you and yours.
Randy Weist.
Thank you. It's always an honor to be up here, always a little bit nervous, nerve-wracking maybe. But first of all, I was just over there, I think all of you were. Congratulations. Wow. Dr. Vander Jack? Mr. Graves? Wow. You should have been up there cutting that too, because I have no doubt that you put as much into that as any other. But, I mean, I mean, oh. 20 years ago, we decided to move our, well, we were instructed not to send our kids to this school district because we were part of that other local school district growing up. And my wife and I chose Hudsonville. No regrets, none, not to belittle anybody else or that their school district, their school system maybe could work too. But wow, that was incredible tonight. I know it's close to mention that. Briefly, I know you have a lot of an agenda. Dr. Vander Jack, also congratulations on your recent review. You have worked above and beyond virtually every expectation that the board set. I attended almost every single one of those meetings, when I interviewed people countless hours, like, I don't know, 100 hours of sitting, listening. And frankly, of those of you who were there, a lot of work done, and a lot of listening to a lot of candidates that you just knew weren't capable of running this district. And when it came down to it, there were only a couple at best, and two who were capable. And you were one of them. And Hudsonville is honored to have you. I don't think there's too many in this entire state that can run this district like you do. I don't always agree, and I know we have a long ways to go. But you know, you know the weaknesses, and you will continue to strive forward. Board, as you consider the goals of SORFIVE tonight, and looking at all of our data that was collected, I hope that you, the board, find ways to mend the broken fences. Between you and our professional educators, and between you and our remarkable staff, you sell the numbers, I don't need to berate you. We have a bunch to celebrate, so not tonight. Likewise, I look forward to each of you as individuals supporting Dr. Vander Jack in your votes tonight. You need to show a unified front to our teachers, to our staff, and community. You've heard it from our union people, from everybody who's been up here. Please, 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 show a unified front. It's absolutely imperative. And what better way to finish this night by doing so? With a shadow of that and your decisions. Thank you very much.
Mindy Banden-Hubel.
Good evening. Transparency is defined as the quality of being easily seen through in regards to a governance context that refers to being open and honest. Admins down here at Hudsonville tell their dedication to transparency but have zero actions to back that up. Most reason is the superintendent evaluation being held in closed session. Sure, nobody wants their dirty laundry aired in public and on videotape, but what is there to hide? Doug has given a rate of 97% effectiveness. 97%? Wow. I would love to know specifically what these board members use as the basis for those scores. I find myself asking again, if you are proud of what you teach and how you lead, why do you constantly keep it under wraps? When you signed up for this position, be it as an administration in a public setting or as a board member, you knew going in that you would be scrutinized by those whom you serve. I find it interesting how loosely the word transparency is used around here. Another example is the free choice classroom books available to students. I've asked repeatedly for a list of authors and titles that students are able to utilize. I continue to be told how much we, as in Hudsonville Public Schools, value transparency until it comes time to actually be open and honest. I was asked, why do I need to know all the books available if my child is only reading one or two? My response is, why can't I know? I pay my taxes, and that money is used in part to purchase these books. In essence, I own a page in each of them, and so does every other member of this community. If there's nothing to hide, nothing to be ashamed of, and each teacher is proud of what they offer, then show me. Each teacher is required to have a summary and parent signature page for each book, so there isn't extra work involved for the teacher. But I'm still turned away, those darn high standards again. Sheesh. Amy Taylor, head of curriculum, told me that as a parent, I'm entitled to all materials in every child's classroom. Hmm, there must have been some miscommunication between staff and admin then, because my request fell on silent ears despite my child being enrolled in an ELA course. I'm sure someone will get back to me sometime. Hudsonville used to stand for conservative values. That put an emphasis on working together, valuing students and staff, and incurred in kindness and respect with teachers and admin, leading by example. Now we have teachers belittling each other, students cussing directly at teachers and other students, and staff more concerned about being good friends with students rather than disciplining them. When it upside down mass HPS has become in such a short time, there are plenty of still good things around. But I'm only given three minutes to share my insights and perspective with you. We are called to train our children in the ways in which they will go. Therefore, it does not surprise me that students act in such poor ways towards each other because they are surrounded by a worldly culture that no longer values what it used to, and the walls here at HPS no longer protect them. I am disappointed in the current board's review of Dr. Vander Jack. Instead, to see what used to be a quality school settle for less education and put more of an emphasis on social and emotional behaviors instead, we are not preparing our students for life outside of these walls. We are shortchanging them and sending them off into the future ill-prepared for what they will encounter. Unless we make an effort for real change, they will continue on the same sad path. I don't enjoy standing up here, and I don't like spending my time preparing these statements and focusing on the bad things. But we can't continue to turn a blind eye and hope that things will improve.
Moving on to our action items. First up, we have our consent agenda. We have that the following resolution is proposed, that the board approve the consent agenda action items as presented. So, move. Move from Dawn.
Support.
Support from Andrew. Are there any questions on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Next up, we have our regular action agenda. And first up, we have our early childhood center renovation bid recommendations with Mr. Kaffords.
Thank you, President Cooper. The recommendation before the board for the early childhood center bids renovation was reviewed at the work session, and just talked about a few things. We did have a good amount of bidders. This, the total amount of bids is well within the budget for funds available. And our recommendation is the board support these bidders, and we get the project going.
Are there, so we have the following resolutions proposed, that the board approve the Owen Ames Kimball Company be authorized to issue notices of pending award in the amounts indicated to the contractors and suppliers listed on the attachment, pending confirmation that all requirements of the contract documents have been met. Furthermore, that upon receipt by Owen Ames Kimball Company of the appropriate documentation, contracts be awarded to these contractors and suppliers by Hudsonville Public Schools. The total value of contracts from requested motion is $1,5,501, as presented by Mr. Patrick Briggs, Assistant Superintendent of Business and Finance. Motion on the table.
So, move.
Move it by Ken.
Support.
Support from Nick. Are there any questions for Mr. Birds?
Remind us, Pat, of the big picture. You talked us through that the work session, the big picture in terms of what's changing and...
Sure. The, like, the scope of the project, what the work we're doing?
Please.
Yes. We are, this one, pieces for this, the field house, or the wrestling program that's been at the early childhood center, junior high, freshman campus for years, that's coming out over here to the main campus in the field house. We're going to renovate that space, divide it into a cafeteria and a multi, a movement room for young, for young children. room for young, for young children. The current cafeteria is going to be renovated and made into two classrooms. There's some central areas of the building where we have some storage, staff offices that's going to be retouched and refreshed. And then as one of the alternates, there's going to be a restroom inserted on the side that faces the pickleball courts mentioned tonight. So, and then there's some doorwork, various other touch-ups to the building, but it's for that million dollars, we're getting quite a bit of horsepower for that. So, and those are the highlights.
Thank you.
Remind us again, timeline, what's going to stay?
Well, we're really going to start demo here in maybe the end of January, February, but then we'll really get in and start doing the renovation work in March. That'll run through late fall, wrap up in November.
Some of the facilities, I think, open by the end of summer. Cafeteria, things like that, but if I do.
Other questions for Mr. Briggs? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Propose same sign. Motion passes. Next up, we have our non-homestead resolution.
We will ask Mr. Briggs to stand in order in case for additional questions, but we ask, we do ask for the board, we had a conversation regarding the non-homestead village of a four-year non-homestead with a two-year heavily override. On that, you'll look at, if you look at the resolution, it's two proposals. One is the eighteen mils, which is considered a renewal. The other is a two mil that is zero tax dollars cost to, personally just how it's worded. That is on there intentionally, that's a heavily override. If approved by the board, the next phase gets into having conversations with our community to educate about the difference between the two. We cannot levy more than eighteen mils, period. This is a non-homestead, the same as roughly forty-six thousand dollars per election cycle in having this every, well, technically, we do it in four years, we'll be on the cycle with a sinking fund and the board at that time to make a decision, we'll run it in that direction. But the recommendation is tonight to approve the resolution for the ballot on May seventh of two thousand and twenty-four for eighteen mils with a two-year heavily override, non-homestead.
Okay, so we have that the following resolution is proposed, that the board approve the resolution calling a special election on May seventh of two thousand and twenty-four for a four-year operating village renewal, as presented by Dr. Vanderjeck, our superintendent. So here, support from Mark. And I'm sorry, did you say it was just for the initial eighteen mil ones that were, or the both of them that we are, have the motion for?
The motion is for both.
Okay.
Thank you, it's a good question. Both, for both.
Yes, support. Support from Dawn. Okay, now are there any questions for Dr. Vanderjeck or Mr. Cafferts?
Thank you for bringing this forward. It's overdue in the district. We've always had strong support, some ups and downs, but strong support from our community for our, for our district financially, which we appreciate so much as a board. And saving taxpayers money, we save forty-five thousand dollars a year, is just a wise and prudent use of the trust that the taxpayers put into us. So thank you for bringing this forward and giving us this option.
Any other questions?
Thanks for your work on this, Mr. Birds.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Propose same sign. Motion passes. Next up, we have some human resource items with Ms. Ann Rich.
Good evening. This is not typical, that I would have four staff members to bring to you for recommendations for hire, but it's kind of the world that we're going to be living in, I think, for a while. We had one unopened position at the beginning of the year that we have had someone in place, and so now we're going to be officially hiring, and then we had two staff, two staff members that resigned mid-year, and then there was a need due to another health issue. So I just wanted to explain, none of these are additional FTE, they're all replacement FTE. So the first position, Ann, I want to be very clear, we have awesome people, as always, even though it's mid-year. Okay. So the first is Celeste Lara. She is a five-year veteran teacher, and she has been teaching in Costa Rica. She graduated from Grand Valley State University and right on graduation, she moved to Costa Rica, taught there, came back and is really excited to be able to put, as she said, her certification to work. Don't see her, because I just want to make sure. And so she is doing work at Jamestown Lower with proper recess, a resource position. So we're very excited to recommend her for hire there. As well as Katie Pousman. Katie had, is kind of a, the MDE is kind of doing this welcome back to your educator initiative, and she was the person that had her education degree and her certification that decided to raise her children, and she has children that are now school level in Jensen, and really decided, and you know what, I'm going to get recertified. Did that, and we're lucky enough to have her in a recommendation for an EI categorical position at Jamestown Lower as well. Then Kylie Ost. Kylie is a Hudsonville grad, she had the last name of Van Turgen when she was here, and she, are you here, Kylie? If you are, stand up, come on, let's go. Kylie just graduated from Calvin College, Cal, there's a university, it's a university, right? And she is being recommended to hire in a resource position as well at the five, six school. So very excited. And so her eyes light up, maybe as a summer science kid? Yeah, okay, I love it. And then finally, Hannah Wetlawfer. Hannah is a Western Michigan grad, just recently, I think, like this weekend, and she is being recommended to hire for a position at Baldwin Middle School in Spanish. We did have this position as a twenty-five percent high school, seventy-five percent Baldwin, but we do, the start of the trimester and everything, we kind of shuffled the schedule a little bit, so it is a hundred percent at Baldwin for this year. But Hannah is just a very poised, amazing young woman, and she did a semester abroad in Spain. She's energetic and charismatic, and I think that she's going to bring, you know, some great stability to that class there at Baldwin. So four great teachers with lots of different backgrounds to be a part of our new staff for recommendation.
Okay, so we have the following resolution is proposed, that the board approve the following certified hires, as presented by Anna Armstrong, our Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources. We have Celeste Lyra, Katie Hughesman, Kylie Ost, and Hannah Wetlawfer.
I'll move that.
So moved by Andrew, support by Dawn. Are there any questions for Anna Armstrong?
We are offering Spanish seven and eight.
Uh, it's an eight.
It's an eight.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Should we offer it seven?
Has any questions?
You are, yeah. We can talk about that as we talk to the board.
Hey, Mr. Craig, you've done a great job there. You've got work after teaching Spanish, haven't you?
Yeah. I am very thrilled.
All right, any other questions? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Propose same sign. All right, motion passes. Next up, we have our two thousand and twenty-four and two thousand and twenty-five calendar recommendation.
All right, well, I'd like to thank the HEA for their work on this as well, with myself and Dr. Vanderjeck, and I know we've had conversations as well, board, so thank you for your work on this. We are recommending a calendar for the two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five year that is going to give students and staff and the community a great year. That's, and it also aligns with ISD's common calendar, so everything's good. Hundred eighty student days, just like we've talked about, we are, you know, the only, I think, district and the county that's still offering a hundred eighty student days, but it's a hundred and eighty-three staff cases.
The only adjustment to this calendar, which the board has discussed already, is the school starting on the Wednesday as opposed to the Monday, there's a pass or two half-days, followed by a long weekend, then we get into the four-days, and then Labor Day weekend, and then another four-days, because Labor Day weekend, and eventually we get to the plane at thirty thousand feet.
Yeah, I also think the, I might have shown the board one that, I know Becky Skipper and I caught that spring break is actually a week later, and that's because of the common calendar of ISD, so I think I might have shown you one where spring break was a month before, and I know Becky and I quickly caught that. So it is aligned with ISD's common calendar.
So we have the following resolution is proposed, that the board approve the attached calendar for the two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five school year, as presented by Ms. Anna Armstrong, our Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources.
I'll move that.
By Nick.
Support.
Support from Mark. Are there any questions for Ann?
So with that one exception, this is the same that we looked at together. I just want to thank you and the HEA, because I mean, this is one of those that I think we get a lot of, our community feedback on.
Yes.
Especially on the fair, and there's no perfect solution, but I feel like this does a really nice job of trying to meet in the middle on it, so just thank you to everybody involved. Hopefully, we can get the word out, people will be thankful about.
All right, send it out.
Starting on Wednesday. We have lunch, right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, all in favor say aye. Propose same sign. Motion passes. Next up, we have our first reading, we have some policy additions and revisions, Dr. Vanderjeck.
Thank you, we have about six policies, and we did share with the board a couple weeks ago online, and then waited for some feedback, I do, I know Mr. Cooper had some feedback, appreciate the feedback, we incorporated those that could be, come there. This is the recommendation, as you, shared with you, no changes to the admin, reduction in recall, that's a new policy, the online blended learning adjustment. The weapons policy was simply just a language cleanup, as well as info security, and then the technology acceptable use form, and the free and reduced lunch, all of those were kind of minor changes. It was a, I'll say, a light cycle, like, going to the first reading of our policy. So our recommendation, I just start first reading these policies, we'll bring these back in January for a second reading, as well as adoption and approval by the board.
So we have the following resolution is proposed, that the board approve the first reading of the following addition revisions to board policies, as presented by Dr. Vanderjeck. We have the administrative staff reduction slash recalls, the online blended learning program, weapons, student technology acceptable use and safety, information security, and free and reduced price meals.
So moved.
Movement by Andrew.
Support.
Support from Nick. Are there any questions for Dr. Vanderjeck?
Online blended learning, are we, is that primarily changes of wheel driving or compliance to state law or?
Compliance to the state law.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Dr. Vanderjeck? So is this the only ones that we're going to be getting through, need all up for this?
No. So there are normally fall updates and spring updates. These are the fall updates. There is a whole series of other policy updates, I believe I shared with the board. I know, I want to thank, since they're here, Mrs. Armstrong, as well as Mrs. Skipper, Mr. Nate Deville, they're having other detailed conversations. There are substantial changes to the law that might impact policy. We will have additional policies that may be brought before the board. I know they're working through some recommendations. We do have policies in place already, a pretty good spot, we want to make sure they're in good shape for some of these new laws go into effect. Some go into effect in February, some go into effect, I guess there's one in March, and there's one in July, so we're trying to look through them, and they're doing a great job working through it during this time of year, as we said, there's a lot going on.
Thank you. Other questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Propose same sign. Motion passes. Next up, we have our new course recommendations, our first reading, presented by Amy Taylor.
Good evening, this is always an exciting time of year when we bring before you course recommendations that in large part really stem from teachers who are super passionate and thinking through innovation and opportunities for our students that will continue to elevate and accelerate their learning. So two course proposals were shared previously with you, had the opportunity to share a few more details with you this evening. As you may recall, the first is the seventh grade STEAM Automation and Robotics course. As you may recall, last year, you approved an addition of a sixth grade course. So our current sixth graders are the first students who started in the STEAM program when they were kindergartners. And so our vision is really that those with the addition of the sixth grade course and then next year, the seventh grade course, that will continue to grow those STEAM offerings right into high school eventually. And so through the work with the STEAM team and the teachers, the recommendation for the STEAM course is to take the Automation and Robotics course that was approved last year for sixth grade and break that into two parts. It's very robust, students find it very engaging, and there's a ton of opportunity for innovation and problem solving and critical thinking. And so we want to expand that offering with that content into seventh grade. So taking the course materials, offering, making an offering for sixth grade, which they will continue to have, and then creating with the same materials, a seventh grade Automation and Robotics B course, that students do not have to participate in sixth grade STEAM in order to have, be successful in the seventh grade course. What you'll notice from a funding standpoint is that last year, after the board's approval of the course, we were able to write a grant that through Project Lead the Way, which is the materials that we use as far as curriculum resources, a grant that waived the cost of certification, which is an annual certification cost, as well as a participation fee for sixth graders at Baldwin, as well as at the five, six Georgetown building, which was exciting to be able to offset some of that cost. We have recently submitted an additional grant that would allow for seventh grade at Riley through this course to offset some of that cost as well. You do not see that reflected because we have not yet received that grant, but we're hopeful that that will offset some of those costs a little bit moving forward.
Why don't you leave the second one, and we'll do the motion, and we'll open it for discussion.
Okay. The second course that I bring before you this evening is also an exciting opportunity, really falling in our fine arts department, and the opportunity for students who are really excelling and passionate about art. This is an AP Studio Art course. Some of the highlights that I would offer, there are some prerequisite courses that we do anticipate students would need in order to be highly successful in this course. That would be the Art Two Drawing and Art Two Painting for ceramics, and then taking Art Three by junior year is encouraged really for their trajectory of success in the AP Studio Art course. The other piece that I would note, that I think is just an exciting opportunity for our students, certainly in AP courses, we know that students often have an opportunity to earn college credit, but one of the components of earning that college credit is submitting a portfolio to the college board, and I think when we are talking about art students and really those who are highly passionate and forecasting maybe the future in, in art beyond their K-12 experience, it's just a really exciting opportunity for them to be in that position of really putting together some of their finest work for submission for college credit. And I think that's a unique situation here that looks a little different than a typical AP course that I wanted to add in as well.
All right, so we have that the following resolution is proposed, that the board approve the first reading of the following new course recommendations, as presented by Ms. Amy Taylor, the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction. We have STEAM for seventh grade Automation and Robotics B and the AP Studio Art. So moved. Movement from Dawn.
Support.
Support from Ken. Are there any questions for me? Amy, I will say on the Studio Art, it's really good that they do have to do a portfolio because anyone that wants to pursue art in college usually has to present a portfolio, so what a great opportunity.
Absolutely. Yeah, and again, that's just unique, and that's why I pointed that out, I think that that's a very unique opportunity for our students to position them for a lot of success.
Thanks for bringing STEAM to seventh grade, that's awesome. The AP Studio R note, is, when did that, when was that AP course created, at the, by the, I mean, is that like, been out there for years?
That I don't know. I'm not certain how new it is at the AP level, but this proposal is new to us.
No, I understand. It's been out there for several years. It's not, it's not new.
Not a new course.
Okay, I was, again, just curious. It would be interesting, again, tied to the SOR goals, as we expand opportunities for students, both academic and support opportunities, it would be interesting to, again, in a future meeting, talk about. would be interesting to, again, in a future meeting, talk about curriculum areas, either course areas, that we are still targeting to have an AP capstone course tied to it. You know what I mean? And, you know, what AP, it's great that we're offering more. This is, this is awesome that the district continues to move in this direction. A sense of, well, there's AP courses here, here, here. We have that curriculum, and we keep, we're striving for a capstone course on this part of the curriculum or that. You know what I mean? That would be an interesting discussion point. Again, in a future work session tied to the SOAR goal, expansion of opportunities.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Just one other comment, Amy, as we look forward, because last year we had sixth grade, this year seventh grade. Are we looking for eighth grade next year?
We are. And even starting to explore the potential in, as we move into the high school, when we're talking about renovation of some of the spaces for our robotics program, how that space may also be able to be used during the school day for particular academic courses that would support in this area as well.
Any other questions for Amy?
Just a comment. I think these, these courses definitely support the goals that I think that we're talking about as well. Just always refreshing and reassuring to see. So it's awesome to see, one, interest from the teachers to, to kind of take, take hold of this and run with it with students, and also give students opportunities. So thanks to you and all the staff for that.
Thanks. All right. All in favor say aye. The post same sign. Motion passes. Next up, we have our SOAR five goals for second reading.
So we have two recommendations this evening. I'll start with the first one. We've had some discussion, both in meetings and individual conversations regarding one of the goals. I'd like to pull that out at this first recommendation. First recommendation tonight is for the short term, long term, and ongoing goals for the five categories from curriculum, special services, HR, finance, and co-curricular. We have had, I really want to give kudos to our administrative team, who worked really hard this summer to look at the data from our community, which was derived from focus groups. The process is an 11-month process to get where we are today. I would be remiss to say that this plan, I believe we truly can say is community driven. It is driven from data. It is not based on what individuals really want to put in a plan. It's not based on, with all due respect, simply what the superintendent wants or seven board members want. It is community driven with, with feedback from our administrative team, our teaching staff, our community, our support staff, our students, our board members, and altogether the one. So there are several areas. I think we've kind of addressed. There was some feedback from the board. It was very beneficial. I do want to talk about just a couple of highlights. I know there was questions about discipline, for example, that came to what was embedded into the strategic plan. We do have two goals regarding that. One is really talks about the impact and the consistency in discipline and working with staff. How does it work from a staffing standpoint to make sure we are consistent with our discipline? And it is impacting student learning. And then also when it gets into, how does that, how do we support our teaching staff when it comes to discipline? Quite often, when students are disciplined, they might be ready to come back to the classroom, but we also have staff. We want to make sure we're in a good place when the student come back and working through those processes. So we've incorporated a lot of those into the strategic plan. As we have discussed before, there are parts of this plan that will, will take off and we'll get moving with right away. We define short-term goals as things that we want to begin work on soon, and they might take one to two to three years. Our long-term goals, we might start soon, and then they might take three to four to five years to complete. Our ongoing goals are things that we want to begin working on, and that way just, they continue to evolve over time. So all of these things are things that are in our minds and start to drive some of the discussions that we have as a board, as an administrative team, as a central office team, along with a lot of these conversations, quite frankly, with our HEA partners, as we work with our teaching staff, or are finally involved in this process going through. Fully, knowing full well that creating any strategic plan, the world might have different ideas of how to maneuver through them. The last plan we, the board approved, did not have anything about COVID in there, and that's what happened. I'm not suggesting there's going to be another pandemic, but I do know that there are other things that we will deal with, that we cannot turn a blind eye and say, sorry, that's not part of the plan. We're not going to address it. So this is, I believe, a very robust plan. I think it has a great vision for the future for Hudsonville. Is it perfect? I think it's really good. And so I think we've taken a lot of feedback, and we've made some changes. So the recommendation is for everything you see in front of you, the adjustments you've seen, with the exception of the fourth goal under short-term for special services that I'd like to address next.
All right. So we have the following resolution is proposed that the board approve the second and final reading of the SOAR five goals as presented by Dr. Vanderjeff, our superintendent.
So moved.
Movement by Andrew.
Support.
Support from Ken. All in, any questions for Dr. Vanderjeff?
There's a question about artificial intelligence. Can we define that? Is that just a, I don't know who asked. Is it, is it just what artificial intelligence?
Says it, yeah.
Yeah. No, I completely agree there. Took it down. We'll, we'll make that adjustment. So we'll say artificial intelligence, and then in parentheses, we'll say AI. Because the kids won't know what artificial intelligence is, but they know what AI is.
That's right.
I think he knows what the goal is. He knows what it is. He's on, he's on.
Other questions for Dr. Vanderjeff?
We get the process, the robustness of the process, the involvement in the process by staff, by central office, by teachers, by, by, within this district. We started strategic planning under the last superintendent. It was good to start it then. It's been, it's continued to evolve, and we've taken it to a next level. Just well done. Well done by this team. And we have a good, it's a good plan to guide us into the future. Not perfect. There's always room for tweaks, as you said, Dr. Vanderjeff, but this is a well-done plan.
Yeah, I agree. I'm really proud to be a part of this process. Ken, you had some great points in the work session, just themes that came out of the things. And as we review this over and over, I feel like we've done a really good job as a group to, to address those themes. And yeah, it's pretty incredible to watch all the hard work that our staff and communities put into this. So we should be really proud of this, of this strategic plan. Excited for it.
I was pretty busy today. I'm not sure I know everything that's going on here with special services, short-term number four.
That's the next, that's the next agenda.
Well, that's, I'm sorry. Should have made that.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The post same sign. Motion passes. Now we're going to move on to SOAR five goal, the second reading of special services, short-term goal number four.
We had some conversation, I'm sorry. We had some conversation regarding the short-term goal, number five. I thought we had some great dialogue. I'm trying to figure out, trying to take the data that we have, trying to interpret and say, you know, we want to do the best we can. We talked about for all students, but we also talked about, we do have populations that we want to make sure we support also. So our recommendation tonight, I did email the board, a slight adjustment to the goal that was recommended before it was recommended, and that it would be a short-term goal for special services, which is different than the long-term goal that was just approved as long-term goal number one. Please keep in mind, there are two separate goals. One is, is really regarding the harassment and bullying that's maybe taking place and how to prevent that for, for every classroom, all kids. That can, this is a short-term goal to evaluate, select, and implement preventative strategies to best discrimination of students. So that is our recommendation for that short-term goal. I did send that out to the board this afternoon after a very, I will say, a very healthy conversation with Dr. Hooper and Mr. Bolt. Thanks this morning.
All right. So we have the following resolution is proposed that the board approve the second and final reading of the special services, short-term goal number four, as presented by Dr. Vanderjeff. Dr. Hooper back. Support from Dawn. Movement from Dawn.
Oh, I'll support.
Support from Nick. Any additional questions for Dr. Vanderjeff on that goal?
I don't have any questions, but I do recall, it's hard to believe post-COVID that you can forget some of the things that we've discussed. But even back in 2020, the data we received from the community had expressed a need for us to take a look at this. And I'm very proud of the work that's been done. I'm proud of the communities that have been formed to look at this, and proud that we will still continue to look at this. It's a necessary part of a growing community. It's the right thing to do, and I hope we can continue to make progress.
Any other questions or comments? Hear none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The post same sign. Motion passes. Next up on the agenda, we have our superintendent evaluation. I'll go ahead and read the superintendent evaluation for Dr. Douglas Vanderjeff for Hudsonville Public Schools for the contract year of 2023. Hudsonville Public Schools Board of Education has completed the 2023 calendar year assessment of superintendent of schools, Dr. Doug Vanderjeff. The NASB superintendent evaluation tool was used for this assessment. Dr. Vanderjeff received the following scores in the following areas. Governance and board relations, 3.5. Community relations, 3.66. Staff relations, 3.93. Business and finance, 4.0. Instructional leadership, 3.65. The average score of the professional practice category, which were those five areas I just mentioned, was 3.73. The student growth and progress for district-wide goal categories were scored as follows. Student growth, 4.0. Progress toward district-wide goals, 4.0. When scores are factored in for all categories, the overall superintendent score corresponds to a highly effective rating and a score of 97%. To support continued success, the board will conduct evaluation updates in the following timeframe, per NASB recommendations. At the January work session, we will develop SMART goals for 2024. At the April 2024 work session, we will have an informal quarterly update. June 2024 work session, we will have a formal mid-year review. August 2024, we'll have a work session, we'll have an informally quarterly update, and November 2024, evaluation. The Board of Education looks forward to working with Dr. Vanderjeff and is eager to partner with him at opportunities to be even more effective in his continued leadership of the district. So the following resolution is proposed that the board approve the superintendent evaluation that was just presented by myself, by Dr. Barbara Hooper as board president.
So moved.
Movement from Ken Hall. Support from Dawn. Are there any questions?
Some of the questions that just occurred to me now, while I was talking about the next full review being November. I know NASB has talked about making a tool. Depending on what that tool is, will that calendar be adjusted if necessary?
Yes. So the NASB is developing a new superintendent evaluation tool. At this point, they are not sure if the superintendents, if every superintendent will be required to have an annual evaluation this coming calendar year or not. So right now, we can't make any decisions on a formal evaluation until we get more information back from NASB, and it's unknown when they're going to make a decision.
As long as we know that there's that caveat that we adjust it, if necessary, based on NASB.
Correct.
Any other questions?
We talk about Doug's leadership in the district, and I know that Doug will be the first person to say it's the team. It's the central office team, the staff, and the principals, our, our teachers. It's the whole team. And that's true. There's the whole team under the direction of a strong and capable leader. You know, I think about things, some of these we talked about in the evaluation, some, and I won't even talk about the building. I won't even go there. That speaks for itself. But the focus on continued expansion of student opportunities, both academic and social-emotional, is critical to the performance of the district. Things like, things that we're trying, some of which may not work. We, we're trying to, we're moving forward with, what if elementary kids are required to take some form of music? Will that have an impact on math scores? There's data out there that says it does. Let's try it. Let's see. Let's work with that. And that's moving the district forward versus sitting on status quo. We may decide in two years didn't work, but you're moving forward and trying something new and unique and different. The audit, when you get an audit response, I'll be honest, I don't remember if this was last year this year, Patrick, so if you can help me. But when you get an audit response, and the auditor says, this is one of the, I'm paraphrasing, not, don't take this as, but paraphrase, this is one of the best managed districts I've seen. The SOAR process, again, well done by all team members. I think about the grants. We have upped our game in terms of pursuing grants to support many aspects, many new things, academic, a lot of new areas within the district. That's, that's something that we weren't doing just a few years ago. I mean, we were doing it. I'm sorry. There were people focused on grants. I don't mean that, but we put more emphasis on that because we realized that there's money out there that we can tap into to help our students. Again, more emphasis than there was just a few years ago. And then I would say this, the SOAR process we talked about. And you roll that all up, and you go, what are the outcomes? We now have a dashboard that we can look at and say, let's say T scores, M step scores, how are we, social-emotional learning, how are we doing? Where are we improving? Where do we still need to grow? We get better. So we're driving that with information around which we can make, use to make decisions. All strong moving forward for the district. And that's a huge thanks to all of the team under Dr. Vanderjeff's leadership.
Any other questions?
Just wanted to comment too. I want to echo a little bit of that. Ken, I'm almost verbatim, but you know, this is a unique review process. My first time, it's a lot different than review process in the private sector. Nearly half of the reviews based on the district as a whole. So in a district like this, you would be the first person, always saying, that's the team that, that drives that, that you lead. And so it's, it's a testament to the, to the parents, staff, and the students that we are in a phenomenal district that allows for that robust score in that category. The, the process, the discussion we had that night, I thought was really productive and healthy. And we noted a lot of strengths that you possess. Also talked about different areas for growth. Mr. Hall, Mr. Davis, I want to thank you both for giving kind of the historical perspective on how years ago we didn't really do reviews, and how it's, it's gotten to this point. So it was, it was great to have that historical perspective and see how far we've come in this process. Dr. Hooper, I want to thank you for, for engaging the NASB this year to facilitate the, this, which has, as I said, hasn't been done before. It was really helpful to have it facilitated in the way that the NASB recommends, which then leads to the, to the calendar that we just outlined, which is a recommended process that we have been always following. So there's, there's a confidence that, hey, you know, there, there is an expectation that we set these SMART goals, we evaluate them on a regular basis, and, and do that. So this is, is all very much part of a recommended process that we go through. So it's, I'm excited to, to set that up and then follow it out into the future. And we're also thankful to you, Dr. Vanderjeff, for your openness to set these SMART goals. Say, okay, even though you've been around for a while, you're, you're a lot of experience, we're going to identify areas of growth, both professionally and personally, that I think is a good example to all of our students in our district too. Say, hey, I don't care how much I know about this area, how experienced I am, but there's always opportunities for growth. So I know before we talked about that, for ourselves to continue to grow, for you to set these goals, that's an example of itself for the district. So I just want to thank everybody up here for, for the involvement in this process and the dialogue that we had.
There are comments?
I'll just, second and third, both of those things. And I think, I think the community is, you know, through the SOAR process, I think the community has expressed their satisfaction with, with Dr. Vanderjeff's performance. I think this has allowed us all an opportunity as a board to come together and also agree that we strongly support this man, and he's done a really good job to drive growth in this district and to hold us to a high standard and make this, you know, district a place that people want, want to be at. I think, I think that there's certainly room for improvement. And in my, in my opinion, when, you know, we have an evaluation, whether it's as a board here or in the private sector, it's, it's good to understand kind of what's, what's been going well, but it's also a good time to understand what we can all come together to improve upon moving forward. And so one of the things I appreciated about- And so, one of the things I appreciated about our discussion that we had was that we talked very candidly with each other about things that we want to do better, both as a board and for Dr. Vanderjeck as well. And I think that was a really healthy discussion. And so, I think I'm looking forward to the future. I think the goals that we just approved as a district are really important, but I also look forward to all of them together to support Dr. Vanderjeck as he continues to grow as a professional as well. So, thank you, everybody on this board for that discussion. And thank you, Dr. Vanderjeck, for your leadership and for all the support this meeting.
Yeah, I want to highlight some of the things that some of the other folks just talked about. I think that we have superintendent with many, many excellent qualities. And I think that the tool that we use to evaluate him was good as far as it went. But one of the things that I'm looking forward to is some of the things that Barb, Dr. Hooper outlined as far as, as we move forward throughout this year and giving some additional goals to the superintendent as he continues to lead this district. And I'm really looking forward to that opportunity to be able to do that because to think that the goals that we're going to be presenting are going to have to do a lot of leadership qualities that I think our superintendent does exhibit and has. I think a lot of the things on the evaluation tool felt hindered that they were, they were not looking at the leadership qualities as much as I would have liked them to. So, I'd like to look at that going forward. But one of the things that I told Dr. Hooper was that as a board, I think that we did not, at least I as a board member did not do my job last year in noting the different goals and opportunities to review those throughout the year. And when I took the course in October, I saw those different timelines and things that we had there. So, I'm looking forward to going through all of those also. So, that's my input.
And no comments? This is a really good process. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
But opposed?
I vote.
I'm telling you. Record note, David is opposed. All right, motion passes. Next up, discussion item, our stadium scoreboard of Dr. Vanderjeck.
So, we have an opportunity, we've been looking, and we have talked about this, this is not part of, this is not part of the bond issue. There have been some requests about a video board at our Eagle Stadium, of which we do not have, nor do we anticipate setting aside dollars for this scoreboard. The conversation tonight is not a recommendation, but to continue dialogue with potential, maybe whether it be vendors or businesses that want to contribute to a video board at our, at Eagle Stadium. If you look at the backside, the one sheet that has the score and then it says Eagle Stadium, the other side actually has the back of the current scoreboard. And that's, you know, we would see a rendering of what it would look like prior to putting up. Our idea is that we would do, we have one, two, four, seven, whatever it looks like, in one location versus all over on the fence in different areas to have, and basically recognize who the vendors are on the back of the current large scoreboard. The large one that says Eagle Stadium would be on the far north end of the stadium. On the other side of the, of the small scoreboard off to the right, that would be taken down, we'd have this one at the end. We do have a dollar out for that, that video board. The discussion tonight was to continue to pursue potential donors to get that put up at our stadium. We are not, and I say we, I believe as a community, and maybe as a board, definitely as a, at least as, I'll say myself. I'm not a big fan of putting vendor signs all over. So, we have 30 different signs and 14 different dentist offices. No, I'm sorry, I'm going to issue in my tooth, so. But to have that in different locations, this would be pretty much the only location. We'd have something to be on the back of the current scoreboard. And then we have the video board, which would not have any advertisement on it when it's off, but they're very welcome to be advertisement on it during halftime, during admission, before the game, and go from there. So, really the discussion tonight is, is can we continue to pursue this option? We do not have a sole vendor that would say, hey, well, we'll develop, but we also don't want to do all the legwork that the board says. You know what? We don't know that well. So, really that's the discussion. And I would normally wait till the work session, but we don't have another one until January, and there's some dialogue that's taking place right now. And I'm impressed to have that discussion. Not, so that's why.
So, with respect to what's on this as the Inc. Partners, is that something that we rotate every year? Is that something that's easily changeable, whether it be as a video?
No, it would be, we call it a wrapped board. It would be like a vinyl covering that would say, welcome to Eagle Stadium. And then it would be a set. So, the idea how this might evolve into what you're asking, but the idea would be we might have three, maybe four vendors. Maybe they donate a fourth of the cost to the video board. And it might be a 10-year commitment that that will be up there with their name on it. And go from there. If we feel like we can't get enough dollar out to put this in and we have to do it every year, we're trying to get away from the, if you donate $200, you get a sign up here and that's not going to pay for the video boards. We'd like to get paid for and put in for track season and/or football season.
So, your only concern is being tied to vendors for a long period of time? So, I'd like, need just a little bit more information on how that's looking?
And just to be clear, we're not going to, you're not going to show up someday and see it without the board seeing what it would look like, what the vendors are. I can tell you the vendors that are in conversation are not ones that are going to go in. That's a fair point. And we also want to be cognizant of what they stand for also, in that sense. We're not going to have Budweiser.
And that's always the touchy part of that. As long as it could be changed and protected, maybe that'd be the final part of the contract.
It can always be, it can, correct. Or if they change, what if the business changed their name? I think those are conversations, I think the conversation tonight is, is.
Directional.
Yeah.
Keep going with this and see where it lands. And we're not going to, we're not going to put it out without board, what they, what they see. We're not going to take anybody's money without having an agreement with the board. And that's what we do. So, it will probably stem into another conversation. Hopefully, the last time we brought this this board, I believe it was June, July, we did some legwork. With where we are, we'd like to continue. Our focus, quite frankly, is not that, that on the field house. But I don't.
This is a six-month project.
It's powerful. Sorry, yesterday, but so, so the idea is to have that especially so we can continue or not continue. We can be done with that.
I appreciate that you guys being offered.
I didn't notice the score on the logo.
I don't know, do we have a quarter on here? I'm assuming it's.
I'm assuming it's.
Seriously, our, again, for some historical perspective, our reluctance, strong reluctance by the board in the past, you know, things change in the past, so I'm just giving that perspective, was, again, we didn't, as you said, Dr. Vanderjeck, we didn't want advertisement, you know, along fences and just ubiquitous within our buildings and within our athletic facilities or the marching band. You know, we just, we didn't, we were very concerned about that ubiquitiveness of advertisement in society in general. It's like, man, school should be a place where you don't have to be bothered with that. Now, having said that, we do announce, you know, socials providing pizza, you know, for the coaches and everything. We, we talk about those vendors that are supporting us and we appreciate that. This is certainly lower key than what we have, we're concerned about in the past. And so, this is a different, you know, a different situation than what we've run into in the past. And so, it's good, it's lower key, it's lower. So, my input, again, mine alone, is that it's worth continuing to look at because I think that's what you're looking for, some directional, I mean, other board members, we speak up, you may have different opinions, but this isn't that advertising everywhere, every place in the district. We're trying to be smart and about where and how it makes sense for us.
Dr. Vanderjeck, if we were to pursue this and we couldn't find from the various vendors, I'd say there were four, and we couldn't secure enough funding to purchase it, would we continue to look for additional vendors? Or is there a limit to the number of vendors? And what would happen if we can't secure enough funding? Because it is.
It's a great question. I think, I think our vision was to try to have three or four. I don't want to have 50 vendors on the back of the board. That just diminishes the board's organization. I think if we can get three or four and try to accomplish our goal, if we get close, it's a conversation with the board. How close is close? And there's, let's just say, if we're $100,000 short, that's too far. If we're $20,000 short, that might be a different conversation. But we want it to look nice. We want it to be classy. We want it to be, at the end of the day, when we turn off the scoreboard and our kids use facilities, no different than the field house, we want kids to walk in there for PE class and not be inundated with advertising. That might be different during sporting event when we put things on the video board. But at the end of the day, we want our kids to be able to experience school and not be influenced by outside.
I may answer your question. Maybe, maybe mention this at the top. What's the basic cost of this?
Right now, it's roughly costs about $500,000. So, the installation.
And the partner logos in the back was, would be permanent? They wouldn't be different?
They would be permanent.
They would be temporarily.
Right, exactly.
Like a 10-year wrap. So, if you wrap your vote, and it's like the same idea. That's what it would look like, but. No, I agree with, kind of, I think it's certainly with continued support. I agree.
Do you feel like it's a threat to the community?
I do, I do. Unless there's a, a standing shot and he, we'll get, we'll get back to you in a minute. Thank you.
All right, next up, we have our report items, and we're going to start with student council. And Jane could not be here tonight, but I would like to welcome Nick Gunnick, and he's the vice president of the student council, and he will give the report in Jane's absence. So, welcome, Nick.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, good things are happening in the student council. This past meeting, let's see, the two Tuesdays ago, we introduced our freshmen on board board. So, they got to be part of it. We introduced 10 new freshmen. Yeah, two of them are my younger brothers. That's, yeah, that's actually happened in the past. No, we just, the big thing right now that we're working on is, next week, Friday, we have our assembly and big games, community games that we're working towards. So, we are working on trying to organize some games and activities like during breaks and between quarters and stuff. So, that's a lot of what's going into that. We have, we have, next week, we have some spirit days that we participate in. That's exciting, always makes the week a little bit more fun. And then in January, we have a blood drive coming on the 16th. And then there's, in the workings, we're trying to figure out still a winter dance possibility. We did one last year. Mass success, people really enjoyed it, it was a lot of fun. So, possibly this year we might proceed with that.
Yeah, a thumbs up. Sounds like already walked today. It's going to happen.
No, I think that's all I got.
Thank you, Nick. Any questions for Nick?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
All right, so we'd like to give updates on our buildings since we're here. Maybe we can start with Park Elementary, Mrs. Appleton's, with updates. And the amazing construction work that's taking place, zero interruption to construction.
I wasn't going to talk about construction at all, actually. It's happening still. It's not, it is messy. There's a lot happening in our district, and hopefully you've had an opportunity to participate in some or watch some of the great things. But today, I want to tell you about one thing you might not know about. Our fourth grade students at Park Elementary participated in a service project where they sponsored a community family, and they brought in donations from their families and from, you know, projects they were doing at home to raise money in order to support them over the holiday. And then today, all of our students met in the cafeteria, our fourth grade students, along with a lot of parent volunteers, and they racked up all of the gifts for the families. And our fourth graders were able to raise, just, we have three sections of fourth grade at Park. They raised $1,700, and they were able to purchase 120 items that the family needed at this time of the season. And then they also were able to purchase some of the wants for the family. So, they'll have a really exciting holiday season where they can open some presents, and our fourth graders got to take some ownership in providing a little bit of holiday joy to our Hudsonville community. So, that's just something that happened at Park, but there's a lot of examples of that happening throughout the entire district. So, just glad I got to tell you about that one today.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Jamestown Upper Elementary, Mr. Andrew White.
Good evening. I was going to talk about charity as well. This is such a great time for our kids as we think about getting back to the community. And so, one of the, we did, a number of them, but one of them was a food drive. 6100 items went out, and it was, it's so great to see the kids bring those items in and be part of the packaging and delivery process. But it's really the conversations that go on in the classrooms around the needs and just the awareness that kids are brought to the fact that we have community members and kids in our buildings that have significant needs and just the awareness that they can actually have an impact on that. Great conversations. Another thing that's been happening in our building that Ann's going to love, that I want to highlight, was student teachers. And we just wrapped up having four student teachers in my building. And really just trying to build those relationships with colleges and universities so that they want to place people in our buildings. But so thankful to have four teachers who are willing to take that on because it is a lot of work for our teachers. But the benefits that we were able to reap are just awesome. Not only having trained, educated adults extra hands there, but one of them I was able to bring on and hire as our building sub because she just graduated and took the weekend off and then started back in our building again. So, that was real fun. And I would definitely not be surprised if you are introduced to her next year as one of our new staff members. She's definitely the kind of person we want to keep around this district. Today, we had a great opportunity to have some of our Riley Middle School musicians come over to the building. And a huge group, we had over 50 kids, a band, orchestra, and choir. And they came just to do some piano. It was just supposed to be this really quick, 15-minute, you know, foursome. You know, we had to do two concerts because of space. But the joy to see the middle school kids come back and be able to perform for some of their former teachers is just awesome. And just the vision casting that we're able to do for our third, fourth, and fifth grade students to show them next year or the next year, this is what it could look like for you as you move into some of those roles. So, some stuff learned, and I think now we're going to build.
Mr. Ross. Eighth Mr. Ross.
Hey, good evening, President Hooper, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to serve our students and families at Riley Street Middle School. The best thing about being a principal are the stories about our students. I want to tell you three tonight. I want to tell you about an eighth grader by the name of Tim. Tim came to us seven weeks ago from China, couldn't speak English. And our eighth graders have just taken Tim in. We are using Google Translate very heavily to communicate with Tim. Tim enjoys our lunch every day, and he has a really unique group of kids that come alongside him. A highlight for Tim in the seven weeks at Riley Street was last Thursday night, he had a drum solo in our, in our band concert. So, that was exciting. I want to tell you a story about an eighth grader by the name of Eden. Eden's the kid I get to see every morning as she gets out of her parent loop. And she's a kid you smile at because in sixth grade, Eden was fighting cancer and was not able to come to school. And you didn't think about her sixth grade year, and this is a testament to our outstanding orchestra teachers. outstanding orchestra teachers, they were able to bring Eden in, in the spring and she was able to play outside the window with her classmates because her immunity level was still low. But this is a kid that has just thrived academically and been able to participate as a member of our eighth grade class, um, this year. So she's just a kid you see every day and you're just happy that she's there and she's living life the right way now and she's been successful. The final thing I want to tell you about is a seventh grader by the name of Connor. And Connor has benefited from our athletic programs. Uh, you've supported our B teams at the middle school level and Connor's been able to be a part of a couple of our, our teams. And I would say Connor is a novice player and a novice athlete, but Connor's been able to make friendships, he's been able to be a part of a team, uh, just is doing well academically and relationally now. So thank you for your support of all of our kids at Riley Street.
Thanks, Mr. Ross. Next up, Mr. E.
Good evening again, everyone. Uh, thank you for being over there and supporting the opening and the ribbon cutting. It's, it's hard to not get up here and still have that at the forefront. Um, it's a big day today, so uh, it's been a lot of fun. Uh, as I kind of listen to my colleagues speak, it made me think of a couple of things and I want to highlight something fun that we get to do at the high school level. And now that I've been here for six years, um, get to kind of see where our graduates go. And it made me think of just how, how proud I am to get to be a part of this, uh, above this district and serve at the high school. Dr. Vanderjagt and I met with one of our graduates from four years ago now, yesterday, named Delaney Brander, if you remember her. And she, uh, like a lot of, it seems like a lot of students that really loved high school, myself included, she wants to go be a high school teacher when she's done with school and she's wrapping up. So she wanted some advice. We actually took, uh, the opportunity to meet with her last year as well, uh, at her request. She wanted some direction about getting a master's in educational leadership. And uh, if you remember her, she was very involved in student council and the cheer team and, and leadership qualities, uh, below even back as a student. So we were just really proud to see her come back and we took her, of course, around the facility and she got a sneak peek, uh, yesterday afternoon of the facility. But you know, as, as my colleagues were sharing, it made me think about the experience that she got to have, uh, her whole way up before she went to Ohio for, for college. And it's the work that all of our staff, our administrators, our parapos, food service, transportation, everyone, the finance, resources, curriculum departments, and special services, everybody really is what makes this district great. And I, maybe I'm feeling nostalgic about and proud about this district and being a graduate here and, you know, I see two people in front of me, uh, my boss's bosses here that also graduated here, uh, close to the same time as me. And it's hard not to feel a lot of Eagle pride tonight. I didn't prepare anything, I didn't know what I was gonna say, but that's how I feel tonight. It feels pretty great, uh, to be a Hudson Eagle. Um, but then when I get to be in this capacity and see students that were inspired by our staff here, and then in some way, shape, or form, just wanted to come back and, and hear from us about what we think and, and be encouraged and, and to go into this profession. Uh, Dr. Vanderjagt told her yesterday, it still resonates with me right now, that it's the best profession in the world. Uh, and I agree with that. We get to have such an impact and to get to do that here, uh, and, and really set the tone for many years to come with this new facility. You know, and then you think, as great as the building is, as cool and shiny as the lights are, the new equipment, it's the people that get to fill that building up that make this place special. It's the coaches that are gonna coach, it's the athletes that are gonna work hard, it's the memories that are gonna get made there, friendships that are gonna get made there, and hopefully the buzzer beaters with us, uh, winning against Rockford Lake, your sheet said there, that are gonna, you know, be what lasts, uh, the memories that can be made. So thank you all for your support, uh, of all of us. Uh, thank you to all my colleagues here, all of our staff. It's really a pleasure to be here and serve. So happy holidays, happy December. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. E. Next, I have a quick update, just a couple things. I want to thank all the administration staff, uh, for their participation, uh, all the OCSM coordinators, as well as Mr. Bernard, our first responders, our, we call them local heroes. Yesterday was shocking hero, yesterday at Meyer, um, at six o'clock, it, uh, it was lit up like a Christmas tree outside, which was really the safest place to be in Hudsonville, was mine the last time. But it was great to see our, our kids in their faces light up, their eyes light up. I appreciate, uh, one more night, our administrators, us at time with kids, we will never, ever forget. Um, tomorrow isn't a happy day, Nick, don't forget, don't stay all day. Um, so we just, you didn't have like that need for you to stay all day because you parents here are happy month. Uh, there are, uh, there is no stick snow plan for the rest of December, so I went with that in snow day, so you can bring that with you back tomorrow. Uh, thank you for all that participated in the, uh, the ribbon cutting tonight at the Field House. Uh, it is a, is a great night, a lot of work done. And I do specifically want to thank Patrick for the amount of, um, just not only the work, uh, the conversations, um, the patience with me. Um, there's a lot going on in that facility. I could spend hours talking to you about some of the unique features in that building that you will get to explore over the course of time that our kids will have it. It's a very unique, detailed facility. Um, you know, the, the advantage of, I would say, Pat, Jordan, and I, um, being around the entire time working through it, um, we lost seven women midway through, that park has picked up the pieces and, and ran with that, Casey Glass has been around, um, he's just been a lot of fun. So thank you for those of all. Uh, next week, Friday night, our girls, uh, we start with our unified basketball, we have 445, um, which, uh, these are, are maize and blue will play each other, which guarantees us the win at our very first event, um, over at, uh, the Field House. And then our girls play, we have the 6:00 PM, our boys will play roughly at 7:30. We have a couple of special presentations. There's a, there'll be a video presentation, there's a, um, there's gonna come up, maybe I'm gonna say a couple of quick words, and the kids get ready to go, um, and compete. And I do want to thank our, I would say our, our colleagues with Unity. As you know, um, I think we have strong school districts all across West Michigan. Um, more often than not, I can see public schools and private schools, they're, they're don't always agree on everything. Um, Jerry and I have a great relationship and I just want to appreciate them, understanding the importance of this, um, coming together as a community to get that facility together when it opens up next Friday night. Hope you can attend, um, certainly gonna be a, a great night. Uh, regarding my evaluation, I appreciate the board's time. To that, I do want to appreciate Robin interhelping, collecting all the data and getting that on the right bus so the board can access it. Um, but it's not really about me, uh, it's all the people in this room. It's all the parents that have been very supportive and taking care of, of the things that you've taken care of, um, not only with their kids, but what takes place in our community. It's about our support staff that will be after miles with their kids all the time that eat them on the bus and they take care of when they have blood needs, when they come to the office constantly with bumps and bruises and these people wrap their arms around these kids every day. Um, it's about our teachers that are unbelievable in the classroom. If you could get a chance to watch, um, they're impressive. Our teacher, everything what they do every day. And yes, there are always challenges and somebody doesn't agree with us to act, um, not one of them wouldn't give anything to take care of the kids in the classroom to do it. Um, these people on your left are administrative team. Um, they're the ones that are there countless hours in the morning after school doing extra bus duty because we have two dogs, um, chasing after kids, maybe that make it away and you chase after them sometimes in heels. Um, I just think it's, um, these people, I would go to bat with them today. They are the best administrative team I have ever worked with after 33 years of education. But I just pre- appreciate each and every one of them. Um, and I also feel, um, as well as I love our administrative team, our central office team is by far the best in the city of Michigan. And I would go, I would go with any other team to say for the work that they do, the passion that they have, you know, the sleepless nights that they get sometimes trying to navigate sometimes some uncharted territory and or muddy water. Um, so I just want to thank them not only for their support, but all they do. Um, they have amazing skill sets, but more often than that, I think, um, to me, they're just great friends. And I want to thank you for that. Um, and last but not least, I wish you all a Merry Christmas. I'll be in there, try to get some time with family and friends. We'll try to see you back in 2024. Bye.
All right, we will do a board roundtable and I'll start on my right. I'm ready.
Um, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, blessings for this, during this holiday season and um, appreciate so much, everything, I mean, Dr. Vanderjagt, appreciate so much everything that you do. Looking forward to a very positive 2024.
Okay, I have another question for you. Is that a, is that a local family that you're dealing with?
Yeah.
Okay, great, we're in the school itself.
Right.
Okay, thank you very much.
Wow, the facility, amazing. Again, it's been processed for so long. Um, and I know a lot of work went in the last few days to get ready for the new. A lot of it stuck around, um, probably a lot of not always so excited, extra, editorial, asylum work, um, but it was amazing. And it's the first time I've stepped in those doors and I'm glad I waited because it was just, again, another reason to be a proud Eagle. So thank you to everyone and for the patience that everyone exhibited and the final details I'm sure will come together as well. I too am looking forward to 2024, believing that as a board, we'll continue to work together on our code of conduct, um, making sure that we support one another and I wish everybody a joyful, peaceful Christmas, happy holidays, please spend time with your families, and we'll see you next year.
Yeah, as, as an Eagle, this is a cool night. And uh, again, we have a lot of feedback from the community. Um, we, we know that that is a, not an inexpensive facility that we just built, but it's the generosity of the community and I think it was highlighted in both speeches, but it's, it's not just for sports, just look at all of the educational opportunities that that facility will be used for. I even mentioned that there's a color guard. So it's going to impact everybody, health sciences, you know, all of that. It's just fantastic, really a cool night for all of us and, and I am, uh, I was hopeful tonight, uh, was going to be a big night here as a board, uh, hopefully, um, uh, that, that showing through, um, the, the work that we collectively done as a group to, to continue to grow together. Uh, hopefully, we can continue to, to lead effectively and, um, and, and give confidence to our community, uh, that we're here for the right reasons. And I'm, I'm just really thankful for, for everybody up there on the stage and I know the, the conversation we had and the work we put in and, um, uh, we just really appreciate all of you here and we're excited to continue to go forward with all of you and us. Merry Christmas and holidays season.
Um, this, Christmas time is my favorite time of year and it's the, um, it's the time where we go to Christmas programs and Mr. Vanderjagt said the power program to all the families. Um, you know, this is a time to, to slow down, to reflect, to be thankful for what we have. And I thought that was.
Very well spoken.
And I think it's something that we should all do and make sure we keep in mind. Um, you know, life isn't perfect, we're not perfect, um, but we have so much to be proud of and so much to be thankful for. And I certainly am. So, uh, thank you Doug for everything you do for us and thank you to, to your team and all the principals and teachers and administrative staff. You guys make this place who it is and I'm proud to be an Eagle, so Merry Christmas and thank you.
Nick, good to have you here as our student representative tonight. And thanks for the building reports, those are always a pleasure to hear and I wanted to kind of take off on something Jordan said about it being the best professional world. My wife was a teacher here for 25 years and I had a number of careers while she was doing, I was a minister and business and sales. And I would tell her consistently, she has more influence on children and on people than I do in any career that I've had. It is a highly important and competitive career and I'm delighted with all the teachers and staff we have here. It was exciting to see the opening tonight, uh, old board members were there, old administrators were there, a lot of important people from the community were there, delightful time. So I wish you all a very Merry Christmas up here and up there. Thank you.
I just want to say to the Field House, wow, absolutely beautiful. And there will be lots of exciting things that occur in that building in the future. And Jordan, I just want to tack on to what you said tonight. The impact that teachers and staff can have on students seriously cannot be emphasized enough, it can make such a difference. My son flew home today at noon and he had reached out to Dawn's husband because Dwight had done a lot for my son when he was in high school. He said, hey, you're probably gonna be at the ribbon cutting. And Dwight said, yes. And my son came specifically so that he could see him. So I, I know the, 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 the relationship that a teacher and the staff can have on a student is absolutely incredible and it can change their trajectory for the rest of their lives. So thank you. I also like to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and to spend time with your family and friends, um, because you'll never know what happens, so I wish everyone a very Merry Christmas. All right, uh, I will take the motion to adjourn.
I'll be back.
Motion by Mark, support, support from Dawn, all in favor say aye. All right, we are adjourned.